The regular meeting in the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:08 PM on October 23rd, 2018. Seated in front of you this evening from my left to your right are Director Dean Hanke, Director Jim Brigette, myself, Director Mike Ostafi, Director Heather Douglas, Director Jessica Craig, and Interim Superintendent Dr. James Baugh. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Craig, would you like to lead the Senate Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Board Members in front of you is the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions to the agenda? I make a motion that we pull Item 8H from the consent agenda and add that into nine or pull that out as a separate item. Is there a motion to accept the agenda with that addition?
Second, or so moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so, motion has been approved to accept the agenda with those additions. The next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the school board. And I'm gonna, we have one here, and I want to go through these long guidelines. This is for everybody, so we're not picking on anybody. So the guidelines for audience opportunity to address the school board at regular business meetings. In the interest of community engagement, the Oseo school board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board. As follows, anyone who wishes to address the board must complete a speaker card and submit it to the school board chair prior to the start of the meeting. Once the audience opportunity to address the board has begun, no additional cards will be accepted. We do have one, and it is completed. The board chair will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card. Speakers will be called in the following order. We only have one. When called upon, please state your name and topic. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific member, to any person who is not a member of the board. If more than, please limit your comments to three minutes. Longer times may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. During this agenda item, normally not to exceed twenty minutes, the board and administration will listen to comments, ask clarifying questions if needed, and respond when appropriate. The chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or the superintendents designate to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. The board chair will be responsible for ensuring that interaction meets these standards and will disallow inappropriate interaction. Particular speakers may not address criticism towards an individual district employee. Such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher level administrator. And personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: building principal, executive director for HR, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and finally in writing to the school board. With that, our first and only speaker tonight is Tanya Simons. Ms. Simons.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Simons. I'm a Brooklyn Park resident, and I'm currently a school board candidate, and I want to talk about the topic of tonight's World's Best Workforce Plan update, as well as community engagement. So, I wanted to share with you some thoughts on tonight's agenda topic on World's Best Workforce, because of feedback I'm hearing in the community as I'm out talking to people. So, first, have attended last week's board session. I really do want to congratulate Ms. Freeze and Mr. Watkins on a great job in developing tonight's presentation, and I really hope every member of our community watches tonight's meetings or listens to last week's work session, as that's really great foundational information. And I think they've done a wonderful job with their staff in explaining it very clearly and thoroughly. And I think tonight's information's so important that I'd like to ask you to consider placing it in a more accessible online location. I think placing it under the World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan link would be a natural place for community members to navigate to. Additionally, there's very high-level interest in community members in understanding more about our results, especially in terms of our work on the achievement gap information and data. Currently, it is difficult to find this information very easily. It's located within board meeting agendas or the individual site-specific plans, and there's just a lot of interest in this, so I'd recommend that you work to place more information out there in a natural spot for people to access. And this would also create more transparency and help our stakeholders to understand how we're progressing on the district's goals. And then finally, on this topic, having been at that work session, I'm hoping tonight, as you present, that you can help explain a little bit more on specifics, on what you're expecting to change under the North Star Accountability System versus the current plans, approaches, initiatives taking place today to improve outcomes. So, it's really great information at the work session, but I'd really like to understand, I think community members would want to understand what that means for changes versus what we do today. Second, as I have talked to members across the district, many residents are unaware of district-level activity, but want to know more and want to engage more. So, I'd like to ask you, as well as Mr. Baugh, to consider developing a plan to communicate more broadly and more directly with residents who do not have children currently in the district. One possibility could be to communicate via vehicles that are more visible and accessible to those outside the district who aren't necessarily opting in through the parent and local school sites. And then second, a website on-ramp for volunteer opportunities across the district would help more people to be engaged. Right now, you have to go to the school-specific sites, and I think there's a lot of community members who are looking for opportunities to volunteer, professionals who want to maybe come in and offer their experience, or maybe be guest speakers, or simply mentor students. Then you could place that pool of people more directly with schools that might need more people to help. So, that's just feedback that I wanted to help provide this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Director Baugh, I think there were three pieces of information in there. One, better access to our performance data through North Star and others. Number two, an easier way to volunteer across the district through some type of on-ramp or more a specific area where one can go, but all volunteer opportunities. And number three, wider information dissemination through other vehicles, through however we can do that through other cities. So, I was wondering if you can work with communication staff to take a look at those and, you know, possibly set up a meeting with Ms. Simons to get that going? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Baugh?
Regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate what our students and staff and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission. So, as in the past, I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride, and we'll start with Patricia, I believe is at the top of the list.
In the category of achieving dreams, four students from Oseo area schools were named National Merit Commended Students last month. Maple Grove Senior High's Nicole Campbell, Drew V. Gupta, and Brenna Saladin, and Oseo Senior High's Eli Hoff received this honor after excelling on the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2017. These four scholars may now become candidates for special college scholarships sponsored by organizations and businesses. Thirty-six students from Park Brook Elementary laced up their sneakers on October 6th and completed the Twin Cities 5K in St. Paul. Park Brook provides students with an opportunity to focus on fitness throughout the year, including the chance to participate in this annual event.
For the eleventh year in a row, Oseo area schools had a record number of students earn AP Scholar recognition from the College Board. Our three comprehensive high schools had a combined total of 144 AP Scholars, 40 AP Scholars with honors, and 48 AP Scholars with distinction. Class of 2018 Maple Grove graduates Daniel Do, Lucas Jackson, Christopher Quan, Matias Martinez Zamora, and Alec Nilson, and 2018 Oseo Senior High grad Gabrielle Holton earned National AP Scholars honors. Jason Quatte, a senior at Oseo Senior High, was featured as a CCX News Standout Student on October 10th. Jay, as she's known among her friends and teachers, has a full course load of AP classes and is a positive role model and leader in soccer, basketball, track, and band. She also serves as a student ambassador and focus leader at Oseo. After high school, Jay plans to pursue a career as a medical examiner.
In the category of contributing to community, staff, students, and parents at several schools, including Rice Lake Elementary and Basswood Elementary, contributed to positive school communities by decorating the sidewalks at their sites for the annual Kindness in Chalk event. October is National Bullying Prevention Month in the United States, and the positive messages and inspiring pictures helped reinforce a theme of kindness throughout the district. In the category of lifelong learning, more than 650 students who participate in orchestra, band, or choir from Maple Grove, Oseo, and Park Center Senior High Schools and Oseo Middle School experienced a performance of the world-renowned Minnesota Orchestra at Oseo Senior High on September 28th. The concert was designed specifically for secondary students, and the famed music director, Osmo Vanska, conducted the orchestra. Afterward, members of the Minnesota Orchestra answered students' questions and inspired them to stay involved with music.
Strong community partnerships have given students at Zane Wood Community School a chance to take their learning outside. Thanks to supplies donated by Hands-on Twin Cities and the help of 45 volunteers from Boston Scientific, Zane Wood now boasts an outdoor classroom where students can expand their learning and dig deeper into the school's focus on science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, also known as STEAM. The outdoor classroom is available to all classes at Zane Wood and features custom-built benches, flower boxes, and an archway. In recognition of their positive behavior intervention systems, theme of friendship this month, all students at Rice Lake Elementary School decorated puzzle pieces that celebrate what it means to be a friend. Each student's puzzle piece fits together in one large school-wide display. In the category of mission-driven employees, Ann Maak, principal at Oakview Elementary, is a woman of her word. After students met their $15,000 fundraising goal at the school's fundraiser in September, Maak kept her promise to camp out on Oakview's roof on October 4th. While the evening was chilly, she stayed warm in her tent and even read students' bedtime stories via video before settling in for the evening. You can read more points of pride on our website at district279.org.
Ann reminded me one day, she was on one of my parent advisory groups many, many years ago. I didn't want to reveal my age, but it does reveal my age a little bit. Just one other item to share with the audience tonight in attendance and the viewing audience. Just want to remind people, in addition to the general election this fall, we do have a school board election on November 6th, and I just wanted to take this time to encourage residents to get out and vote. It's a wonderful privilege we have in our country. And a reminder to our parents, and I know we've sent out a number of reminders, board members, but there is no school for students in the Oseo area schools on Tuesday, November 6th, Election Day. With many of our school sites designated polling places, the decision to use November 6th as a workshop day for licensed staff was made to minimize disruptions to the school day and reduce the logistical challenges that come with welcoming voters into our schools. So, it'll be a little different this year, but I think it'll create a great environment for both our staff to do some learning, plus our parents and other citizens to come in and vote. And with that, turn it back to you, Mike.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Baugh. Thank you, staff. Our next agenda item is the school board reports. First report is the September 25th, 2018 Policy Committee Report. And Director Douglas, will you please read that committee report?
Yes.
Thank you.
The school board policy committee met at the Educational Service Center at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. Board members Jim Brigette, myself, Dean Hanke, and Mike Ostafi attended. Also attending were Interim Superintendents Kim Reskraf and Jim Baugh, and General Counsel Tim Palmetier. The committee reviewed proposed changes to the following policies: Policy 506, Student Discipline, and Policy 403, Discipline, Suspension, and Dismissal of Employees, and the administration's proposal to repeal Policies 550 and 551 pertaining to student suspension and expulsions. The committee specifically discussed addition of proposed language to Policy 506 addressing the authority and responsibility of the school district to discipline for particular student conduct occurring off-school property. The committee further discussed the recommendation to add theft, damage, or destruction of school property as a specific form of student misconduct that may result in disciplinary action. The committee also considered proposed changes to Policy 403 pertaining to employee discipline. The committee specifically considered the administration's proposal to eliminate provisions addressing specific disciplinary processes and standards for employee discipline, since these are specifically addressed in applicable laws, existing collective bargaining agreements, and the employee handbook. In addition, the committee discussed the administration's recommendation to repeal Policies 550 and 551, since student suspension and expulsion requirements are comprehensively regulated and addressed by the Minnesota Pupil Fair Dismissal Act. As reflected on the agenda for tonight's meeting, the committee moved the proposed amendments to Policy 506 and 403, and the repeal of Policies 550 and 551 forward for first reading tonight at tonight's board meeting. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, October 30th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. The policy committee meetings are open to the public, and community members are encouraged to attend.
Thank you, Director Douglas. The next up is our October 16th, 2018 work session. And Director Craig, will you please read the report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
On Tuesday, October 16th, Angie Freeze, Director of Research Assessment and Accountability, RAA, along with Tom Watkins, Coordinator, presented on the World's Best Workforce Plan for 2017-2018. However, a significant portion of the presentation focused on building the board director's background knowledge relative to the new North Star Accountability System implemented in Minnesota this year. Specifically, board members had the opportunity to learn how the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, World's Best Workforce, and the new North Star Accountability System are integrated. The board learned about the alignment between the two systems, including a continued focus on academic achievement, academic progress, graduation, and consistent attendance. In addition, board members learned about some of the specific areas where the new North Star indicators differed from the previous accountability measures. One primary difference is that student groups now have equal weight when calculating overall achievement, regardless of the number of students that comprise that particular student group, and provided there are at least 20 students in that group. Also different are the support categories and how schools are recognized. Board members learned the three levels of support: comprehensive support, targeted support, and MDE support, as well as the expectation that the Regional Centers for Excellence, school districts, and the Minnesota Department of Education will work collaboratively to help schools improve student achievement. District leadership shared that although much is different with the new system, there is closer alignment with the mission and priority work of the district.
Thank you, Director Craig. Our presentation is next on the agenda. Our presentation this evening is the World's Best Workforce Plan Update, a continuous improvement 2017 through 2019, and that's Mr. Tom Watkins.
Good evening, Board Chair Ostafi, Interim Superintendent Baugh, board members, cabinet members, and community members. This evening, Tom Watkins, Coordinator of Research Assessment and Accountability, will briefly review our World's Best Workforce results for 2017-2018. Our Director Angie Freeze is unable to join us this evening. As Angie and Tom shared last week during the World's Best Workforce Session, Work Session, the focus, as last week, this focus will remain on the connections between ESSA, which is Every Student Success Act, the new North Star Accountability System, and World's Best Workforce. Since much is new, our desire is to help set a better context for the data you will review this evening. And so, just some background, Minnesota uses the new North Star system to identify schools and districts for support to satisfy the requirements of the federal ESSA Act. ESSA is the nation's pre-kindergarten through grade 12 education law, signed in 2015. ESSA replaces No Child Left Behind as the latest reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The 2018-19 school year is the first full year of ESSA implementation. So, the big idea is that by identifying schools and districts across a multitude of indicators will help better support and target resources. So, Tom will share more details regarding the levels of support for identified schools, along with which schools are identified in Oseo for support and recognition. Support may come from the Regional Centers of Excellence, a local school district, or the Minnesota Department of Education, or some combination of three, of all three. Tom?
Chair Ostafi, members of the board, and Superintendent Baugh, as you may recall from last week's work session, the state has been approved to implement a new accountability system under the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, which is called ESSA. This accountability system has been named North Star, and it replaces No Child Left Behind and enhances the ways in which we gather and communicate evidence of our students' performance across the state. The North Star Accountability System will continue to work in partnership with the World's Best Workforce Plan adopted in 2013 in order to promote equal visibility for every student and support our collective work to ensure equitable student achievement. As with any new system, there are some changes in terminology, so we are now referring to North Star as compared to ESSA, academic achievement as compared to proficiency, academic progress as compared to growth, and consistent attendance as compared to chronic absenteeism. However, despite the changes in language, our conviction for doing the work remains the same. Accountability systems and legislation may come and go, but our work is still to ensure that every child has the knowledge, skills, and dispositions of character needed to effectively engage in our ever-changing global community. In Oseo, this new language aligns with our Oseo priority work, as we continue to engage in work that advances the mission of our organization. One primary change with North Star is that all student groups will now carry equal weight when making determinations about overall school or district performance. Performance will be measured across three stages: academic achievement, academic progress or graduation, and consistent attendance. However, Minnesota has provided a bold statement in how the new accountability system intends to promote equitable student achievement and reduce the gaps we see throughout our state. Minnesota will provide support rather than punishment to schools and districts that are not yet meeting expected student performance for each student group. This intentional focus on each of the 14 student groups will elevate each child and provide supports as needed so that every student can achieve at high levels. The five indicators shown here comprise the North Star Accountability System. Academic achievement will measure MCA, reading and math performance. Progress towards English language proficiency provides a more meaningful and reliable indicator for students who are learning English by measuring their growth on the Access for ELLS test. Academic progress will reflect how students maintain or change academic levels on the MCA from year to year. Graduation rates will honor both the four-year and seven-year rates, and consistent attendance will monitor the percentage of students who are attending school more than 90% of the days that they're enrolled. This graphic depicts another change in the new accountability system, in that all schools are now eligible for support. Previous systems enabled only Title I schools the opportunity to receive the resources and supports needed to accelerate student achievement and progress. This graphic depicts the Accountability Group rules for the North Star system. There are 14 student groups that will be monitored, and in order to be included for accountability, at least 20 students must be present in that student group. Another change with the North Star is the use of countergroups, which refer to non-English learners, non-special education students, and students not eligible for free reduced-price meals. The countergroups are used in accountability calculations when there are at least 20 students in the special population and in its countergroup. The North Star system will continue to count students who have been exited or dismissed from special education and English learner services: special education for two years and English learners for four years. The new accountability system outlines three categories of support for schools and districts. Comprehensive support is offered to schools with a three-year average in the lowest 5% of Title I schools, and to high schools with student group graduation rates below 67%. Schools in this category will be partnered with staff and specialists from the Regional Centers for Excellence to provide training, guidance, and support to ensure that the actions of the adults are supporting the transformation of student achievement. Targeted support is provided to schools with student groups performing below the identified thresholds, again, over a three-year average. And support from MDE is for schools that have low average achievement across student groups over the three-year average. These are the indicators used to identify schools at each stage of the process. You can see in Stage 1, it includes MCA achievement and access test progress. Stage 2 includes MCA progress and graduation rate, and Stage 3 is consistent attendance, which is the percent of students attending more than 90% of enrolled days. In this example, Gopherville Elementary is a Title I school that was in the lowest 25% in Stage 1 and Stage 2, and then also among the lowest 34 elementary schools for consistent attendance, and so this qualified Gopherville for comprehensive support as a school. This is an example of a student group within a school being selected for targeted support because results were below the thresholds in each of the stages. So, based upon this three-stage process, several schools in our district have been identified for support. The four schools identified by MDE for comprehensive support were Crestview, Oseo Area Learning Center, Oseo Senior High, and Park Center IB World School. The eight schools identified by MDE for targeted support were Birch Grove, Crestview, Fair Oaks, Fernbrook, Garden City, Palmer Lake, Rice Lake, and Zane Wood. The three schools in the support from MDE category were Palmer Lake, Park Brook, and Zane Wood. We also had five schools recognized by MDE for school-wide or student group performance. These are ALC Independent Study, Basswood Elementary, Maple Grove Middle, Oseo Middle, and Weaver Lake Elementary. No matter the mandate or accountability system that is imposed upon us, we'll continue to blaze a trail for transformations, transforming system change to ensure equitable student achievement in Oseo. A group of nearly 100 stakeholders from the identified schools and the district team will be coming together on October 29th for our initial kickoff meeting. Representation from all departments in the Division of Teaching, Leadership Teaching and Learning, as well as invested stakeholders from each site, will be working collaboratively to cultivate the changes needed for each student to achieve at high levels. We'll have a series of district-wide and site-based meetings throughout the year, and we'll complete the required school improvement plans for the Minnesota Department of Education by March 1st, 2019. We look forward to our collaborative opportunities, as well as additional moments to keep the board updated on our work and progress. Thank you very much for your time. I can now take questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I thought it would be worth mentioning that there is a lot of data on the Minnesota Department of Education website under the Minnesota Scorecard. It breaks down all our statistics according to the district, and you can also look individually at each school, where, how we're progressing. at each school, how we're progressing. So, I did want to at least mention that. There's also updated numbers as of October 1. How many licensed staff, how many students currently attend, and that sort of information, as well as a great breakdown of the new accountability program. So, I just wanted to throw that out there and say.
It's a great resource.
Yeah, that's definitely out there. It's a good resource. It doesn't allow you to compare school to school within a district, which is the one drawback of that, but it does allow you to look at a school that you're enrolled in or interested in enrolling in. So, there is some good information there. Any other questions? I had a question that came up regarding open enrollment from outside the district and then placed into a school, and then you get placed into 287. Do those enrollments into 287, the performance there, again, mainly special education students, does that impact the performance of the local school they're enrolled in? Or is that taken out since they're really never at that school?
It is going to depend on the indicator in terms of how that would play out for accountability. They each have different rules. The indicators have different rules. For example, when we look at consistent attendance, we have to have students with an ADM that is above .5, and so, they need to be around for about half of the school year in that school to be able to be included for that particular indicator. For the accountability indicators related to achievement, that's a matter of being tested in the school, and also a matter of a period of enrollment in which they were participating in that school. So, it really comes down to those sorts of business rules as to how students are included.
I think, more specifically, if you open enroll into this district, you open enroll to a specific school, but due to an IEP, you never attend that school. You get placed in the 287. Are we held accountable at the local school for the results of 287, or is that a separate item?
Yeah, the situation that you're describing doesn't sound like the person is actually there.
Right, they're not in our schools.
In enrolled, yeah.
They're enrolled in our district, but not in our school.
Yeah, so, that's not something that would fall under the umbrella of these accountability indicators.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Is 287, who we are a part of, are they held accountable in the same way, or are they treated differently as a different type of organization?
Yeah, so, we can get, you know, more specific in terms of details for you, but 287, I'm sure, would have some business rules that would apply to their students as well for accountability. It seems to me like a lot of the questions are around duly enrolled students. Is that correct?
I don't know if it's dual enrollment or not. I mean, they enroll in one of our schools, but we place them in a more appropriate setting, and therefore, they're not, you know, they're still enrolled at whatever school, but they're actually attending 287. So, again, I just wanted to see where the accountability was. Was it put back on our school, or was it at 287 where they actually attend?
Yeah, so, we can pursue that further if you'd like. We could look at some examples.
Yeah, that's my question on that. Directors, any other question?
Great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I guess this is where I'm supposed to ask if we want to remove something for separate consideration, that I already did.
I was not going to correct you.
Oh, I knew that it was there. I just, I couldn't read that far ahead. So, I think we've already made that motion and accepted it. So, a motion, let's just go through it.
I believe what you did, Mike, is you asked it to be moved to action item under nine, so you could have the Board adopt the rest of the consent agenda as-is, and then when you move to action items, you'd go through the list that you have there and add that one item at the end of your action items for discussion and for either approval or not approval.
Okay, so, since we did modify the consent agenda earlier, is there a motion to accept to approve the consent agenda as modified?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda as modified? And the items on the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda as modified passes. Thank you. So, the first action item on tonight's agenda is approval of a purchase agreement for the purchase of property at 9970 County Road 81, otherwise known as the Shell Station. Patricia Magnuson will give us the information.
Thank you, Chair Ostaffi. The final closing statement is included in the materials that are in the Board packet, and it shows the final net cost to the district, which includes all of our charges and fees, to be the amount of $322,149.18. And it also notes the donation from the seller in the amount of $425,000 for the property. Tomorrow, after we complete the closing, we'll begin the process to remove the tanks and to raise the property, and we have received quotes for that work that totaled $97,000, a little over $97,000. Because there's already been a Phase 1 and Phase 2 study completed by the seller, we don't expect to find any contamination on the property. If we do, the Environmental Protection Agency has funds available to offset any costs to make corrections to the soils. So, we recommend that the Board approve the purchase agreement.
So, is there a motion to approve the purchase agreement for the purchase of property at 9970 County Road 81?
So moved.
Motion made by Director Brigette. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. And is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I think one of the things that I'm not sure is clear from the agenda and the way it's presented here, no complaints, I just wanted to make a point that this, the purchase of this property, this is adjacent to OCEO Senior High, and this will allow the option, if the staff at OCEO Senior High decides collaboratively with the district, that we may use that property as a part of upgrading turf fields, moving things around. This gives us flexibility in the future. When opportunities like this show up, that, ooh, here's a great piece of property that we could use in the future, we should seize it if possible, and that's what's happening here. Thank you.
And as part of this, I wanted to note that there is a significant donation to the district being given by Mr. and Mrs. Welk. So, I wanted to thank them very much for what they've been able to do for this district. We are purchasing the property well under market value and accepting a very generous donation from the Welk family. So, I would like to say thank you. We're very grateful for that donation and being able to work with us and helping to leave a lasting legacy to the OCEO school district, specifically to OCEO High School, and I know that that was very dear to their hearts. So, with that, I...
Chair, I had one.
Yep, sure.
I just wanted to clarify with the delinquent property taxes. So, within this agreement, we'll be paying that directly to the county?
At closing, we will wire transfer this total dollar amount, and the property taxes will be paid at closing. So, it's not on behalf of the district, it's on behalf of the seller. They'll complete their liabilities with these funds.
Okay, thank you.
And one additional item, you said that the estimated cost of the cleanup is approximately $97,000.
Yes.
And that there is funds available from the state and other entities to cover some of that, or if we go over that? If you could clarify, please.
The grants would be available if we found contamination on the property, but to raise and remove the underground storage tanks, that's our cost.
Okay.
As a district. But if there were further costs beyond that, we could apply for funds.
But they've already had studies done, correct?
They have completed a Phase 1 and 2 environmental study, yes.
So, with that, the total price that we're paying is 322, and that's what we're approving this evening, roughly, and then the extra 97 are total cost to acquire, clean up, and make ready for any future build expansion or whatnot is about $421,000.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, $420,000. So, okay, so, we've made a motion, we've had the second, and we've had the discussion. All in favor of accepting the purchase agreement, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. The second action is a resolution relating to $44,375,000 general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, Series 2018B, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. Patricia Magnuson will give us the information, and you're not Patricia, so...
I'll just introduce...
I'm just reading. Go ahead.
So, Jody Zesbys here, she's a senior municipal advisor with Ellers and Associates, who's the district's financial advisor, and you've met Jody before, and she's going to cover Agenda Items B, C, and D. We took bids this morning, and we have favorable results, and Jody will tell you about those.
Great, thank you, Patricia. So, yes, just to get to the punchline, we have interest rates on all three bond issues that are lower than what we estimated last month, which is great news because we've been kind of keeping our fingers crossed. Rates have been increasing, but certainly, the district has a great credit rating, which was affirmed, and we'll talk about that in a minute, and is very attractive in terms of the investors that are willing to present bids to the district. So, we did get great results. So, the first bond issue is the facilities maintenance bond issue. This will finance the projects included in the tenure facility plan that the Board approved this last summer. Those projects are completed with annual pay-as-you-go levies and bond issues, and we generally do bond issues every other year so that we finance those projects for a two-year period. So, you'll see on the first page that the Minnesota Credit Enhanced Rating was assigned, and that is the same for all school districts across the state. It's a rating that provides a guarantee should the district not be able to make a payment, and so, that just provides a little extra security to investors in the bond issue. Your underlying rating was affirmed at AA1, which is a very high rating. There's only three school districts in the state of Minnesota with a higher rate, and the highest rating that Moody's assigns is a AAA, and again, just three school districts in the state have that. So, great to see that rating affirmed. Patricia and Kelly Benusa participated in a conference call on October 4th and presented information and provided a lot of responses to questions, which were very helpful to the process, so they represented you very well, and that was critical in getting the rating agency to affirm that nice underlying rating. We got seven bids, so I think you've heard me say before, we like to get at least three, so getting seven is fantastic. The low bidder for this bond issue was Piper Jaffray out of Minneapolis, so that was nice to see. And you'll see the low bid in the notes there, just slightly lower than what we estimated back in September when we presented the pre-sale report to you. So, as a result of that lower rate, the projected tax levies are about $336,000 lower than what we presented last month, so it makes a difference. So, we're happy to see that. I'll quickly go through the attachments that we included with the Sale Day Report. The first two pages include the bid tab, and you'll see the Piper Jaffray bid. Again, that far-right column shows the true interest rate. The next lowest bidder was Citigroup out of New York at a 3.6528, so pretty close in terms of what we call the cover bid. And then, you received other bids from New York, St. Petersburg, Florida, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Charlotte, North Carolina. So, lots of interest from throughout the country. The next page is then our updates to these schedules that we provided to you in the pre-sale report. So, the sources and uses schedule. Page 4 shows the debt schedule related to this issue. Page 5 is our size 2 font, long-term financing schedule, which shows all of your debt and what we're projecting to do in the future with respect to facilities maintenance bond issues, bond issues. And our whole goal in preparing this is to do our best to make sure that that tax rate in the far-right-hand column stays as level as possible. And you'll see a visual of that on Attachments, page 6, and you'll see that levy is coming down a little bit for your capital and debt levies for taxes payable in 2019, and with the refunding savings that we'll talk about in just a minute, we're able to keep that at a lower level, and we'll continue to work to make sure that this stays level going forward unless there's a voter-approved school building bond or something that the voters vote, the voters approve to increase that debt tax rate. So, that looks good. We're happy to see that. And then, finally, the press release that Moody's sent out on your behalf is included in the remaining pages of the Sale Day Report, and I'll just point out a couple of things on there. Again, they're assigning your AA1 underlying and AA2 enhanced rating, but in the ratings rationale, you'll see that they say that their rationale for it is the district's large and growing tax base in the Twin Cities metro area, a strong financial position supported by stable enrollment, so they'd like to see that, and moderate debt burden. So, you really don't have a very high tax rate, and that is recognized as part of this report. They do mention the district's elevated pension burden, and every school district in the state of Minnesota gets that because of the TRA plan in particular, and we know the legislature addressed that, and Moody's has mentioned that they'll likely soften their comments on that in the future, but for now, it's still being mentioned in all of the Minnesota school district press releases and credit opinions. So, that's everything I have on the 2018B issue for your facilities maintenance bonds.
Thank you. We're going to do these one by one rather than addressing all of them at once, okay? So, is there a motion to approve the... So, the second action is a resolution relating to $44,375,000 general obligation facility maintenance bonds, Series 2018B, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Director Brigette. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by, seconded by Director Hanke. Is there any discussion? Again, I wanted to say thank you for this. I believe the first financing savings on this was several hundred thousand, and you did mention that there is even additional savings because we did do better in the market than we thought we did.
There are savings on this one as compared to what we were estimating. So, the next two bond issues will be the refunding bond issues, so this one is for the deferred maintenance projects.
Okay.
Yep.
So, all in favor of this general obligation bond of $44 million?
It's a resolution. Do we have to, do we do a roll with the resolution?
Normally, yes. Yep.
Okay.
Nope, it was not. Okay. That was for, I actually have that elsewhere, but, okay, so, let's do a roll call vote for the resolution. Director Hanke?
Yes.
Director Brigette?
Yes.
Yes. Director Douglas?
Yes.
Director Craig?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero. So, the next action is a resolution relating to $7,710,000 in general obligation taxable OPEB refunding bonds, Series 2018D.
You skipped over one, Mike.
I did?
The first one, the next one is the 9,000 general obligation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did.
Nine million.
Yep, I'm sorry, I did get ahead of that. So, the next action is a resolution relating to 9 million general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds, Series 2018C, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. Patricia Magnuson will give us the information through Jody.
Exactly. It's like being on ventriloquist. So, this refunding bond issue is similar to refinancing your home mortgage or taking advantage of lower interest rates that are available as compared to the time when you issued the bonds. You're not able to keep the money for the district, but you're required to pass this savings on to your property taxpayers in the form of reduced debt service tax levies. So, we know you've already approved your proposed tax levy. We'll have a small adjustment to taxes payable in 2019, but we've concentrated the savings on the next two years, taxes payable in '20 and '21. So, you'll see with respect to this bond issue, we're financing a current refunding of the 2020 through 2022 maturities from your alternative facilities bonds that were issued in 2009. We got six bids on this bond issue, and if you look in the notes, our true interest cost of 2.21%, this is a shorter issue, so you're going to get a lower interest rate, of course, as compared to your facilities maintenance bonds. We had a 2.26 estimated in the pre-sale report. So, we're saving about $266,000. We had anticipated about $252,000. So, nice to see a little bit more savings on this bond issue. Same kind of format, so you're going to see the bid tabulation included with Attachments, page 1 and 2. This one is a little bit more exciting for finance nerds like us, because if you look at that far-right-hand column, the true interest rate, the low bidder was a 2.2095, and the next lowest bidder went out to the fourth decimal point. So, that's always exciting when we see that in our office. There were a little oohs and ahs over that this morning. So, 2.2096 by the second lowest bidder, which was JP Morgan out of New York. Again, you got interest from throughout the country, Charlotte, North Carolina, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Cincinnati, Ohio, and another one from New York. The remaining schedules are updates to the pre-sale report estimates that we provided to you. So attachments, page three is the sources and uses. Attachments, page four has not changed. That is what you're committed to paying right now, so nothing's changed with respect to that schedule. Page five shows the new schedule that you will pay from should you approve the resolution. Our favorite page, page six, which shows the savings then, and you'll see about 130,000 roughly of savings for taxes payable in '20 and '21, fiscal years '21 and '22. And the same rating report applies to this, so we didn't attach it. We did show the escrow account cash flow, and as interest rates have risen on the borrowing side, so have they on the investment side, thank goodness. So we are anticipating earning about 2% in interest as you have those funds on hand before you call the bonds. And again, the call date is February 1st of 2019. So you'll be able to invest those funds after we close until the call date. And that has been calculated into the amount that you need to call the bonds. So we issued a little bit less knowing that you would be getting some savings from, or getting, earning some interest on those funds.
Okay. So the action is the resolution relating to nine million general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds, series twenty eighteen C, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Burgett. Any discussion?
I love saving money, that's why.
Thank you for saving money, yes. And especially property tax money. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Do you want to do the roll?
Oh, it's a, yes, I'm sorry, we have to go through the roll call. So Director Hanke?
Yes.
Director Burgett?
Yes.
Director Ostafi? Yes. Director Douglas?
Yes.
Director Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, so Patricia's still speaking through me, I think, for the next one.
Yes.
This is the OPEB bond refunding, and you'll see the format is exactly the same. With respect to this bond issue, we're also refunding the 2020 through '22 maturities from the OPEB bond issue, other post-employment benefits issued from back in 2009. We got 10 bids on this issue, so that was really fun, too. It was an exciting morning around our office. And you'll see that the true interest cost rate in the notes there are 3.03 percent, lower than the 3.25 percent, 2.5 percent that we estimated in the pre-sale report. These are taxable bonds, so they're gonna have a little bit higher interest rate. And then we'll quickly go through the attachments, pages one and two. Again, the bid tab. Stiefel Nicholas out of Birmingham, Alabama, was the winning bidder, and they were, you know, a fair amount below the next group of bidders. So at a 3.03 roughly, and the next few bidders were around 3.12 to 3.13. So again, interest from throughout the country, so that was nice to see. The schedules, the remaining schedules in our updates to the schedules that we included in the pre-sale report last month. So the sources and uses schedule, the prior debt service, which is what you're committed to now on page four. Page five, the debt service schedule that you will be committed to. Page six, our favorite schedule, which shows 416,000 roughly in savings, so about $200,000 for taxes payable in 2020 and 2021. So your taxpayers can look forward to those reduced tax levies in those years. And then again, the, what we call the current refunding account cash flow, showing the amount that we'll be depositing from these bond proceeds, the estimated interest earnings we expect you to achieve, and then the amount that you'll need to call the bonds by February 1st of 2019.
Okay. So the resolution, the action is we're voting on a resolution relating to 7.7 million dollars in general obligation taxable OPEB refunding bonds, series twenty eighteen B, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Resolution. So moved.
What's that?
Do we need to do?
So yeah, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
First you want to, you have to have a motion first.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hanke. Is there any discussion? Again, thank you for being able to bring us the opportunity to save additional funds. So with the end of the discussion, we will take a roll call vote. Director Hanke?
Yes.
Director Burgett?
Yes.
Director Ostafi? Yes. Director Douglas?
Yes.
Director Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you once again, and happy that we achieved results that were better than we expected last month, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to wrap up that savings that we've just discussed, I would like to thank Patricia Magnuson and Kelly Benusa for being able to give us the financial guidance over the last many years and to helping us put us in a AA1 rating and to work with our partners to help us find the opportunities for savings. So thank you very much. The next action is resolutions relating to applications for the Hennepin County Youth Sports Grants, and Sarah Vernick will provide us the information. Sarah?
Good evening, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, interim superintendent Dr. Baugh, and also cabinet members. Tonight I'm here to request that we have a resolution from the board to move forward to apply for two Hennepin County Youth Sports Grants for our Osseo campus schools and our Park Center campus schools, so land that is in between Osseo Middle and Osseo Senior, and also Park Center Senior High and Brooklyn Middle School. The intent of these grants would be to help offset the cost of potentially putting in two artificial turf fields or up to two artificial turf fields at both campus sites. There is also the possibility of potentially adding some lighting in the future. At the March 13th School Board Work Session, board members reviewed a proposal regarding adding artificial turf fields at both those campus sites. And the board supported the proposal, which included the authorization to spend up to 5 million of an existing land proceeds asset. One of the next steps that you identified as the school board was to explore opportunities with the Hennepin County Youth Sports Grants and other areas to help support and offset the cost of the projects. So at this time, we are requesting two resolutions. One to support a grant for the Osseo campus schools, and the other two support a grant application for the Park Centers campus schools.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve a roll call vote with regard to the resolution authorizing application for a grant with the Hennepin Youth Sports Program to support development of turf fields at Osseo Senior High?
So moved.
So moved by, or a motion by Director Burgett? Is there a second?
Second?
Seconded by Director Craig. And is there any discussion? So I do have some questions.
Sure.
At that meeting back in March, we approved $4 million, 1 million per field for this project, not 5 million as indicated in this letter. There was a half million for a project in Maple Grove, so I just wanted to be clear that we did approve 4 million for this project, not 5 million.
Yes, that is true. It was 5 million total in the land proceeds assets. And you're right, it was somewhere around 440,000, I believe, for the Fernbrook Fields that went over towards Maple Grove with that potential, and then 2 million apiece for one to two fields at Osseo Senior High and in between Osseo Middle, and for two turf fields at Park Center Senior High and over by Brooklyn Middle.
Right, so it was gonna be about 2 million per school, plus, and it turned out to be a half million at Maple Grove, so...
Yes.
4.5, and again, for this piece of the project, a million apiece. In the letters, we're talking about at, well, let's start with Park Center that we, or Osseo that we have here. It's actually approximately 2.3 million that we're estimating the cost. Did you tell us what's embedded in there that's, that were significant, well, that were higher than our 2 million as well as significantly higher than the estimate of 700,000 a field from just three years ago? I think it was 670,000 a field.
Yep, it was 664,000 a field, a field last time, and it was only one field. And part of it is, is that when Dale Carlstrom got the bids from the company that provided us the bid, he wanted to make sure that we had ample room and generous room just in case there were things that we ran into when we were doing soil sampling, when we actually started digging, if there were concerns. We don't anticipate in my conversations with Dale that this is gonna be anywhere near the total cost of it, but rather to say that if you asked for the sky, what would, what would it cost you? If you ran into problems, if you had two turf fields that went versus one, and that has yet to be determined at Osseo Senior High. So that, it, we also understand that the board has only asked or given permission to pursue things up to 2 million and would not plan on exceeding that.
And that these grants would actually reduce our costs?
It is meant to offset the cost of the 2 million per site. And there are also additional grants that we will be applying for through the Youth Soccer Association in January, and also another one that's coming up later on in the year.
Okay. And to be clear on here, we're not approving any project for 2.29 million. You know, the estimate of the total cost is 2.29, and we're requesting a $300,000 grant, and it says, and will assume responsibility for providing matching funds of 1.991 million dollars. Now that's assuming that it's 2.9. I do not want, we're not being held tonight to spending 1.991 million dollars. That is not the intent of this. The intent is to ask for 300,000...
Correct.
To offset the cost. We have, actually, we haven't even seen the final layout or the amenities or anything like that. That still needs to be another work session and a lot of additional work before we approve a $4 million project.
Right, that was part of getting that additional land, for example, offers us flexibility.
Yeah, that helps. So, so I just wanted to be clear, we're not voting, you know, for the board and for the public, we're not voting to approve the project. We're voting to approve that we would pay the difference between what the project costs and the $300,000 that we would gain from the youth sports grant. And that's by statute that we have to...
And you're actually, your resolution is to approve the application for the grants.
Yeah, so yeah, we're approving the application, the grant, and nothing is tying us to actually spending that money or spending a certain amount of money.
Well, I think the intent of the grant is, is that you are going to...
Right, right.
You're gonna use it towards turf fields...
Right.
Because that's what the application is for.
But not turf fields in the, in the cost of 2.291 million.
Correct. The cost is flexible, just like with any construction. It's, it's an estimate.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to be clear on, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since that conversation took place prior to my time, just a little more background on the project. So we have turf fields at three of the high schools.
Yes.
Excuse me. City Maple Grove partnered with the school district to put a domed turf field at Maple Grove Senior. So I'm just trying to get a sense of the need for all the turf. We've got a lot of grass fields at a lot of schools, and I'm just trying to understand the need for turf, additional turf if we have two turf'd, if we have a turf'd field at each high school.
So if I could address that. I just pulled up the, one of the documents that was shared with us at the March meeting where the high schools came and talked to us about what their needs would be. So some of them are additional space for FIAD classes. A lot of times, they can't use the field outdoors because they're too wet or muddy or whatever, and so they're inappropriate for use during school day. So they would be able to be used during that time. That was one of the things that we discussed. In addition to, and that's at both, both Maple Grove, I'm sorry, Osseo and Park Center, and their middle schools. In addition to outside programs, which we would partner with youth programming for after-school activities, including our own after-school activities for our sports teams. And, sorry, I'm just reading it right now. I think that was kind of some of the larger points. I don't, maybe you could shed some light, so I don't really...
Sure. A lot of the intent of adding the additional turf, particularly at the two sites, has to do with the fact that we are landlocked at both sites. And exactly like Director Douglas said, there are potholes, there are sprinkler heads, there are things that get in the way of having those, those grass fields be usable, quite frankly, in many cases during the season. So if you take our spring, for example, we didn't have enough spaces where we could even have practice for many of our teams, our youth teams, our outside space for gym classes because the fields just aren't usable. They're muddy, they're full of snow. At least you could kind of get some of the snow off the turf and provide some space when we get snow in May, almost, correct? We also, in addition, have seen a dramatic increase in participation as we're going into this next fourth year of our grade configuration. And as we start to see the enrollment increase, we're seeing participation in our activities and athletics increase as well as just overall class sizes, and particularly at our high schools. So they're really squeezed for space, and this would be an opportunity for both kids academically and then socially and extracurricular activities and athletics to continue to participate and be involved in our school. So that was the intent and the purpose.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Director Craig?
May I also add that the city of Maple Grove Parks and Recreation has the capacity to fund the Fernbrook Fields, whereas Brooklyn Park or the city of Osseo just doesn't have the capacity. So I think it was important for our district in an effort to equity, equitably build and improve our sites. I think it was, I think, I think it's great that we're seeking this additional money. That certainly helps, and I hope we get that grant. But I think it's also important to kind of equitably spread out improvements.
And I do want to interject that there is a referendum for Brooklyn Park on their, on their, the election to better support their park system and to help expand. And I was gonna bring that up during the discussion on the Park Center piece, but that is something that they do have the opportunity to do and to show support for the children in their community and to help out with, with Park Center in whatever capacity that would be. But we can have a little bit more discussion because there is some additional cost embedded in the next, in the next ask for Park Center.
Dean, I would say from my experience, and I wasn't here for the conversation either, but those turf fields are just, they're so much more versatile than the grass fields. And you can have team after team after team on them. You know, you get a 33-inch snow in April, and, and you're gonna, you have less weather elements to deal with, with those kinds of fields out there. So it, it is to the advantage of our youth to have those, those kinds of facilities available for them.
Okay, and, and just as a side, there was someone with a turf field who a nice neighbor decided to snow blow and completely destroyed the little rubber chips, and they had to spend 20 grand to repair it. So we won't be snow blowing the turf fields, especially in April after we get 30 inches of snow. So I believe that we have made a motion, and we've seconded, and we've had discussion. Is there any additional discussion regarding approving the grant application for Osseo High School fields? Oh, one other thing before we do get that. We are talking one or two. It hasn't been decided for Osseo if it can fit. I know the purchase of the land is going to help that, but we've also talked about expansion needs at, at all of the high schools...
Yes.
Going into the future, and that may compete with some of the requirements. I know Principal Lehan has been expanding some, some of our trades programs and is seeking room to grow there. So I do know that there's gonna be some, we're still gonna have to shoehorn some things in, but I do want to state that, you know, this is for one or two that has not been decided based upon actual space and capacity.
Correct.
So, okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one last question.
Shoot.
When the board worked on the turf fields at the high schools years ago, it took us a while to get to that point. One of the concerns that I would have is sometimes a particular program may feel that that turf field is their field. So initially, you know, the turf fields could be viewed as, you know, they're in the football stadium. The dome at Maple Grove Senior High was for the soccer program. So I just want to be sure that we have the understanding amongst the various activities that would use the fields. that would use the fields, that is, the school's field and the programs will share the fields equally.
Yeah, so, right now, to address what you're talking about, I also oversee and co-supervise all three of our athletic coordinators, and we meet monthly. And they're very collaborative and work very well together to figure out who's going to be using the fields when and what time and how, and working with the coaches and the programs. In addition, they're also working with our FIED classes and the other sites because they not only oversee our athletics and activities for our high schools, but they oversee them 7-12. So, they're always in conversation with the resource managers at the middle school as well, too, to ensure that they have access to it. So, it's been something that we've been very conscientious about, particularly since the building of the dome at Maple Grove Senior. So, we're providing equitable opportunities for all students and making sure that people can rotate through and use them as needed and as necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to, I will now call a roll call vote. Director, oh, we've got it in different order. Director Hanky?
Yes.
Director Brigette?
Yes.
Director Ostafi? Yes. Director Douglas?
Yes.
Director Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero to approve the grant application to the youth sports program for Osseo Senior High. So, now is there a, you want to go through the description of the next one for? Well, we'll just go right into that and then we'll have the discussion. Is there a motion to approve a roll call vote with regard to the resolution authorizing applicant for a grant with the Hennepin Youth Sports Program to support development of turf fields at Park Center High School?
So moved.
So moved by Director Brigette. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Hanky. Is there any discussion? So, in this piece, I do want to point out that we are currently estimating, again, we approved $2 million, $1 million per field, and I believe this is now up to an estimate of $2.82 million for this project. So, if you could, Sarah, give us a little bit of better understanding of why it's so high and would we actually have to incur those costs? Because I think some of that is potential partnership.
Sure. Some of it is a potential partnership, and those are some conversations that we're still having with the city of Brooklyn Park. And then, as you mentioned earlier, Chair Ostafi, regarding some of the bond issues coming up here in November, about where some of that money might end up being laid. That, this is, again, my overall theory about you put everything in the bucket and hopefully you shake out what's going to be feasible in the end. This is what I refer to as if you did everything that anyone had ever asked for and ever wished for. So, in this proposal, it is two turf fields along with the foundations, the footings, and the grading and so forth for a potential dome to be put over one of the fields. The other, one of the fields has to be a little bit larger, and you've got some different spacing because of how you have to lay out, based on if there were a dome to be put in there. There's also some additional electrical requirements and so forth. So, that's why the cost is as high as it potentially could be for this. But, that being said, as you mentioned, there are some other conversations happening with the city of Brooklyn Park that might not have us bear the majority or the brunt of some of this proposal or this estimate as well.
So, you know, my understanding back to that March 13th meeting is that, you know, we would provide the land, we'd provide the turf fields. We would not, you know, the substantial amount of money, over $2 million, but we would not be paying for any additional grading work, any additional foundation work or any dome, that that would be up to, you know, the city to pay for that, you know, with the funds that come from wherever, either this proposal or other funds, that this is not being paid by the school district. We're already investing $2 million into this at maximum. So, a substantial amount of money, it seems like somewhere between, what, $500,000 and $600,000, would be coming out of this proposal if the, if the city does not decide to work with us to move forward with additional amenities.
There would not be a need for it, yes. You're right.
There would still be the potential for up to the two turf fields, but not the additional work.
Exactly, yes.
And again, as you said, still a lot of things are asked in there that would drive the cost above the $2 million that we've approved or gave direction to. So, we would still be looking to stay at that $2 million range for the taxpayers of District 279 and then offset that with this $300,000 grant that we're taking a look at. Any other discussion, any comments?
Well, I think as you pointed out, this is quite somewhat fluid because of other ECMAC work and potentially, I think there was some parking and street considerations that might be necessary at the school also. So, the grant would help kick us off, so that's why we're applying.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is setting the foundation. Again, we are not committing to spend $2.82 million. But, you know, the project may be that much if other partners kick in and there are, you know, still some things to be determined there. So, it would be great if we had that opportunity, and it's not up to us at the moment, so. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, I will now call the vote. Director Hanky?
Yes.
And Director Brigette?
Yes.
Director Ostafi? Yes. Director Douglas?
Yes.
Director Craig?
Yes.
And the resolution passes with five to zero. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Now, let's back up to our additional item, which was off the consent agenda, which was Item 8H, which was the acceptance of the 2018-2019 compensatory grant in the amount of $17,020,629. It authorizes an expenditure and budget appropriation in the amount of $17,020,629. So, to get the discussion going, I was wondering if we could have a brief presentation on that. I believe we had teed that up earlier about.
Sure. I'm going to ask Patrick to give you some background information on it. And if we need to, we can have Patricia chime in, too, regarding the funding formula on how that money arrives at the district.
Okay.
Okay, here.
You're okay there.
All right, good. All right, so, each year, compensatory funds, state statute, Minnesota statute 126(c)(1.5), its basic skills revenue identifies 12 different areas of educational needs that individual sites can identify to use these funds. Funds are generated based on free and reduced lunch population percentages at each site. District receives the funds. We do set aside a total of 7.2%. 3.5% of that is intended for extended-time activities and 3.7% is to support system tool, system-level priorities. So, that's a total of 7.2%. So, over 92% of those funds is sent back out to individual buildings based on the percentage of what they've generated. And then, each site, based on the principal and site team, determines their needs and where they use those funds for. And they follow that, those educational need descriptors as identified in the state statute.
Can you give some examples, Patrick, maybe, of how they use those funds? And Steve and Kelly could probably chime in also.
Some very common examples would be purchasing additional FTEs for classrooms, so to reduce class sizes, to add more allocations to counseling or to instructional ESPs to provide remedial or intervention support. You could do it, it could be used for comprehensive or ongoing staff development within a system or within a building. There's a variety of ways, but a lot of times you see it in reducing class size for more teachers and then also for other support within the building, adult support.
Yeah, cover Kelly and Steve.
Right, and it's also used in a, the two most popular ways to use that money and effective, we feel, is buying down the class sizes and also intervention programming for students who are struggling academically.
Yep, and that includes bilingual services, programs, also some counseling service guidance.
So, that's kind of a general background. So, it's generated off of free and reduced lunch. Each building generates so many dollars, and the statute requires us to turn that an X percent back. And so, the buildings do have the authority to decide how to spend those funds within that list that Patrick said in the statute. So, you have to stick to that list. But the buildings do have the authority. And then, you've heard kind of how the buildings use it for the most part. But, really, entertain any questions that the board has.
As part of the staffing process as well, every principal, every building that does receive compensatory funding, they're required to submit a compensatory plan and how they intend on, so, part of that plan has to speak to how they intend on spending their compensatory allocation and which part of the statute that applies to. So, if it's the first indicator under the statute, their plan has to say, I'm going to run interventions, and that fits Section 6 of the statute, for example. Those compensatory plans have to be done when they go to their staffing meetings because it impacts staffing in the overall district. And the compensatory plans have to be approved by their supervisors, so either Steve, Patrick, or myself. And then, when we meet with the principals mid-year, for example, so, we have a mid-year data check, so to speak, where we meet with principals to review their mid-year data and how they're proceeding with their site improvement plan and their goals. And one of the things we specifically speak to at that meeting is their compensatory plan. So, if you provided a reading intervention, for example, what evidence is there that the reading intervention is being impacting and it's effective? Because you need to know that by mid-year before you start making your next year's compensatory plan by March. So, there are many gaps or stopgaps and checkpoints along the way.
Okay.
We'll stand for questions if you have some questions, Dan.
I do have, is this the total amount that we'll receive from the state for the year in compensatory? Is this the one number we accepted at one time, or are there other pieces?
There are, there's two pieces. There's the overall, what is it, 17? There is an additional $660,000 that also comes under this area. That's, kind of goes with that extended time.
Okay.
So, there's two pieces, but really, the total amount is just over $17.6 million.
Our DLTL budget is around $238, $240 million. So, this actually is about 8% of what we spend. This comes from, as you mentioned, our poorest schools, and they get that money in relation to the need that they've generated at the schools based upon FRL and that it is up to site leadership, mainly site leadership, to dictate how those dollars are going to be used. We do get a lot of questions. Why does this school have this and this school don't? Or why does this school have this and this school doesn't? What are the differences? A lot of that, we hire good leaders at the schools and on our staff, and we give them the direction to achieve their goals, achieve the goals that we set as a board and achieve as administration on down. But they are given a final say on how they want to direct it based upon the needs in their school, in the community in which they reside. So, I just want to be clear for people who have asked that question, why are there differences? It's differences based upon leadership at the school doing what they think is best for the school and the children in that school. And, well, we didn't even go into comments yet, but that was more of commenting on what was presented. So, I would, is there a motion to accept the compensatory grant in amount of $17,020,629 and authorize expenditure and budget appropriation in that same amount?
So moved.
So moved by Director Brigette. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any additional conversation, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Director Hanky?
I thought for sure you were going to dig into like the North Star data when you were on that topic. Because I know the Osseo School District has received these dollars many, many years, you know, year over year over year. And so, when we see the data and the gap is still there, it kind of makes you wonder, I mean, is it a more dollar thing? Is it, we need to do something differently? Because if the gap stays, you know, roughly where it is year over year, are we moving the needle? So, kind of more of a rhetorical comment than a question.
Now, at the, good point, at the work session last week, we delved quite deep into that, into the North Star numbers. Some of the issues that were brought up are very valid. I mean, are we moving in the right direction? The numbers would seem to indicate no in many instances and yes in some instances. But we need to continue to work on those plans. Now, I know there's going to have to be additional work sessions. There's a kickoff on some of the things at the end of this month to address the issues specifically that came out of North Star and what it means to receive MDE support from the government. I'm here to help. So, you know, what is that really going to mean? How do we work with them? How do we generate plans and how do we move forward? So, I, my expectation is we come out of those meetings with attainable goals, plans to attain those goals, measurements to ensure that we're on track to meet those goals, and then checkpoints that we can say, we're on track, we're not, and what do we need to do to fix it? Or kill it? You know, there has to be, you know, very good ways of monitoring the situation and not just going down a path that we've been down for 10 years and haven't gotten anywhere except lost in the woods. So, I'm looking to Dr. Baugh and our assistant superintendents to help drive that work and make sure that now that we do have the new numbers that we're going to be held accountable to, how do we drive that forward with goals that are attainable, with plans that are monitorable and measurable, and outcomes that are measurable as well as checkpoints along the way.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Director Craig?
And touring the schools, this money goes to some very critical roles. And I think this money is so vitally important to seeing those results and the achievement. We don't necessarily talk about growth rates, but some schools are seeing tremendous amount of growth for students with teachers that are purchased or additional FTE staff that is purchased with this money. So, growth rates, we have to consider those. Those are, some schools are seeing some outstanding results, so, yeah, I just wanted to share that.
And I do believe that we've, you know, there's been discussion last week about, you know, do, once we find what's working, we need to ensure that we can propagate it to all the schools where it is applicable. As we said earlier, the leadership of the school, you know, starts with what they think is the needs of the school and develop their plans to do that. But we need to find the successful plans and propagate that to the rest of the schools where it's applicable in helping other schools and other students.
Chair Ostafi, and just to underscore that with the conversation, a big piece of what's going to be occurring is going to be a needs assessment and certainly to reinforce the collaboration that has to happen. And so, bringing the principals and staff together, starting on October 29th, is an element of that. But it's really to find those best practices and work collaboratively, which is going to look, we believe is going to look different than past actions. So, that is a huge factor in making sure that we're uncovering those best practices, and frankly, they're not lost in plain sight.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, Kelly and Patrick, thanks for the input into that. Dr. Baugh? Any other discussion? No? All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Is this a roll call?
Aye.
No, this one is not a roll call. It was, it came off a consent. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five-nothing, and we will gladly accept $17 million from the state. Thank you. The final, I guess I did jump in from the final action, is a recommendation to accept gifts to the district totaling $77,695.78. Is there a motion to accept gifts to the district totaling $77,695.78?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas? Is there a second? Second by Director Hanky? Is there any discussion? Here's where I get to thank everyone who worked hard, the PTAs or PTOs, family members, corporations, civic organizations, who have all committed to helping our students in our district. So, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. We have accepted those gifts. Next is the informational items, and Mr. Palmetier will share information with us regarding. regarding the first reading of Policies 403, 506, 550, and 551.
Thank you, Chair Ostafi, school board members, and Superintendent Baugh. As Director Douglas reported earlier in this meeting, there are four policies on the agenda for first reading tonight. The first policy recommended for first reading is Policy 403, which pertains to employee discipline, suspension, and dismissal. The proposed amendments to this policy include minor modification to the policy's description of the types of discipline or redirection that may be utilized in progressive discipline of employees. In addition, the proposed amendments include removal of language from the current policy addressing grounds for discharge for certain employees. This change is being proposed because the grounds for discharge for nearly all, all school employees is addressed either by state statute, applicable collective bargaining agreements, or districts, the district's employee handbook. I'm going to deal with all these policies at once, if I, if I may. The next policy recommended for first reading tonight is Policy 506, student discipline. The proposed policy provides clarification for a very narrow set of circumstances under which a student may be subject to discipline for their conduct off-school grounds or when not involved in a school activity. In keeping with established legal precedent on this issue, the proposed amended policy indicates that students may be subject to discipline for off-school conduct that creates a substantial disruption or material interference with the school environment or a school activity. In addition, the proposed policy adds theft, damage, or destruction of school property as a specific form of student misconduct that may result in disciplinary action. And then finally, the repeal of Policies 550 and Policy 551, which pertain to student suspension and student expulsion, are both proposed for repeal. They are being proposed for repeal because the grounds and processes for both suspension and expulsion of students are heavily controlled and dictated by the Minnesota Pupil, Minnesota Pupil Fair Dismissal Act, which really negates the need for these respective policies. First reading begins a four-week period for reaction to the proposed policy changes by concerned groups or individuals. After the four-week period, the school board may adopt, repeal, or amend a policy after a second reading. The proposed policies in this situation are available on the school district website with the agenda from this meeting. Comments on the policies discussed here tonight may be directed to the school board or myself. Comments on this policy may also be provided online from the school board policy and procedures webpage, again, located on the school district website.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Palmetier? All right, please, I, I would suggest that parents and groups interested, please read them. And if there are any comments or questions, please, please speak up. So announcements, the full schedule of the board meetings and other meetings is available on the district website, district279.org, as well as future meetings, past meetings, agendas, minutes, video. All of that can be found there. And for tonight, members of tonight's audience and those watching at home can view a list of the upcoming meetings on the room monitor. Policy committee meetings, special meetings, work sessions, and regular meetings are upcoming. We have them listed through the end of November. Our last agenda item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Director Hanke. Do we have a second? Seconded. By Director Brigette. It's been seconded. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. This meeting is adjourned at 7:42 PM. Thank you.